Okay, let me know. You're so fast. All right, well, welcome to the regular meeting for Wednesday, August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We'll start with the roll call.
Commissioner Lazar.
Here.
Commissioner Benson.
Present.
Commissioner Meyer.
Here.
Commissioner Kraft.
Here.
And Commissioner Freitas is not here. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kraft's gonna lead us in a salute to the flag. We will move to see approval of minutes for the June twenty-sixth and July tenth meetings.
I'll move approval of both.
Thank you.
I was second.
Sorry.
Gotcha.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. We'll open oral communications. This will be an opportunity for anyone who would like to speak on something that is not on tonight's agenda. Okay, we will close oral communications and move to new public hearings, starting with the Silva reduced interior side setback variance.
Great, we have Assistant Planner Gonzalez here to present for us. All right, good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Alexandra Gonzalez, an Assistant Planner, and today we're here to present the Silva reduced interior side setback variance for one seven one six H Street. One seven one six H Street is located in the center of the city, to the west of Cooper Gulch, marked here with a yellow arrow. Zooming in, the site, the subject property is located near the southwest corner of H and Seventeenth Street. The site is located in the R three residential zoning district, and consists of a one thousand three hundred and seventy-six square foot, one-story, single-family residence, and a seven hundred and seventy square foot detached garage with alley access. The existing garage is a legal non-conforming structure with northern interior side setbacks of three feet and a southern interior side setback of one foot. Here is the site plan of the project. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing one-story garage and replace it with a two-story structure with an ADU and garage on the first floor and a second dwelling unit on the second floor. The building permit for this project could not be approved without a variance because the applicant is proposing a four-foot interior side setback for the second-floor dwelling unit. And in residential zoning districts, all structures other than an ADU require a, or other structures than an ADU require a setback of five foot. ADUs only require a four-foot setback, so the ADU and the garage on the first floor comply with the setback standard, but the second-story dwelling unit does not. Therefore, variance is required to allow the second-floor four-foot setback. Also, the applicant proposes a point seven foot setback from the southern interior side property line for a stairway for one hundred percent of the building walls attached to. In residential zoning districts, an unenclosed stairway can project up to three feet into the required setback for up to fifty percent of the length of the walls attached to. Therefore, the stairway projection exceeds the setback exception standard by a hundred percent and requires a major variance. In this photo, the project site is marked with a green star. The red shows properties with two-story dwelling units within five-foot setbacks. The yellow shows properties with non-conforming rear-facing structures with the potential to build a second-story dwelling unit. And orange are two-story residences overlooking one-story residences in the immediate neighborhood. Staff noted that it is common for the surrounding properties to have existing structures located at the rear lot line adjoining the alley with setbacks less than five feet from the interior side property lines. EMC one five five four two four point oh four oh, non-conforming building, allows a legal non-conforming building to be enlarged if the project does not increase or exasperate the non-conforming aspect of the building. Therefore, the property owners with legal non-conforming structures in the surrounding neighborhood have the opportunity to modify the existing structures and build two, and build second-story dwelling units above them if no non-conforming features like the setbacks are exasperated. In contrast, if a building is demolished and a new building is built in its place, the deviation from current standards is no longer grandfathered. If instead the project's existing garage was modified instead of demolished, the existing reduced setback for the garage would have been grandfathered. This is a photo from the alleyway that was taken during a site visit. The stairs would be located alongside the southern interior setback adjacent to this parking area for a multifamily residence. This is what the stairway would look like from the alley from this point of view, and this is what the stairway would look like from the park standing, if you're standing in the parking area. As described in the staff report, there are unique hardships associated with this property, including the site's narrow lot size and existing building configuration, which limits the size of future development, not generally applicable to the surrounding properties, as well as the surrounding property having existing legal non-conforming structures along alleyways that can be modified to also add a second-story dwelling unit with interior side setbacks less than five feet. And so for these reasons presented today and in the staff report, the recommendation is to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution finding the project exempt from SEQA and approve the project. I have a suggested motion on the next slide, but we will stop scrim sharing, and staff and applicant are here if you have any questions.
Thank you for your presentation. I will bring it back to Commissioners for questions for staff.
Yeah, Assistant Planner Gonzalez, welcome. I haven't, I haven't heard you present before, so I don't know if you're, you're new on the job, but good, good job. Nice to have you with us. I guess I was just curious, looking at the, at the property lines that you showed us a few figures back, it looked like the existing building. I know we're not here to evaluate the existing building, but it seems that there's almost no setback.
Exactly, exactly.
That's partly why it's non-conforming. So what we're suggesting is way better than what exists already.
Yeah, somewhat, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then can you, just, just from my own education, setbacks are the same regardless of the amount of vertical stories, right? So, but you can have, we can grant, we're allowed to grant a setback at ground floor that might be different than the setback at, at a top floor?
Yeah, so our code would usually allow that if both were ADUs, but since the, so our code basically says that any, ADUs are allowed a four-foot setback all the way up, but anything other than an ADU would have a smaller setback at the top. And so unfortunately, in this case, they have to, we also don't allow two ADUs. We only allow one, so in this, this particular project, we had to classify the second story of the second dwelling unit, and so they have to have that smaller setback.
Okay, thank you.
Just to add to that, there is, there are a few provisions in the code that require the second floor to be, to have a larger setback. One of them is for rear lot lines when there's no alley. There's an added setback for the second floor. But weirdly, we don't have the same additional setback requirement for interior side lot lines. And then another where, place where we have additional setbacks for upper floors is when it's in the mixed-use zones.
When they're close to a residential zone.
Yeah, they're required to step back the higher they get.
In general, we're trying to reduce people cantilevering the second floor to be much wider than the bottom floor. We want it to, if anything, be even or setback a little bit?
Right.
I'm understanding here?
Yeah, I mean, I think the thinking was that it gives, the second floor causes more of a privacy issue than the first floor. But in the case of interior side lot lines, we don't have a step-back requirement.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Can you confirm the R three zoning, if this site were to be fully redeveloped? Is, am I right in reading, I'm just looking at an FAQ, that you can have one unit per thousand square feet? In the R three zoning?
That's correct. That's correct, yeah.
So it would at least qualify for four units, you know, meeting all setbacks, of course, but, but just as a principally permanent use?
Plus, if you are a multifamily residence, if, if you're a duplex or greater, then you qualify for two detached ADUs. So it's six units total.
I just thought I'd talk that through, because it seems like, yeah, from a density perspective, we're still below what the maximum development potential is.
Yeah.
And, and really, the, am I right? I think the ADU laws, if they were building on top of an existing garage, or maybe even just within the footprint, they, they don't have to meet setbacks on the upper floor if it's within the, the footprint of the existing dwelling. Is that correct?
That's how I interpret ADU law.
Yeah. So I guess for those reasons, I find this to be not too big of a, a reach, but I just wanted to make sure I understood that right. Thanks.
Any further discussion? All right, I'll open it up for a public hearing. If anybody would like to speak on this matter, you can come up. Generally, we offer the applicant first opportunity, and as a reminder, you'll have three minutes.
Hi there, my name's David Inos, fifty-year resident of Hobart County, been designing building homes for forty-five years and taught students at the high school level how to build homes for twenty-five of those years. Okay, there we go. Anyway, I've been around here for a long time. I've been designing and building homes for a long time, and I taught students how to design and build homes for twenty-five years for the county. And, and I still enjoy the designing and helping people get their permits, but man, they're making it really tough to work through some of this stuff. So applicant Leo Silva, we were going to, the, the bottom story of this unit was going to be a garage and a office and a, and a storage. And he didn't want, he thought he might be, and then to have the ADU up above. If that would have been the case, the four-foot setback would have been fine. So then he said, well, you know, if I rent that out, I don't want to pull a fast one on the city, so we'll call the bottom an ADU, and I call this the upper, a primary, secondary, secondary, primary. And so then that's when the thing was triggered, that we have to have the five-foot setback. This building is actually four feet narrower than the existing. It's, instead of one foot, it's four foot on the shallow side, and on the other side, instead of three feet, it's four feet on the other. It's going a couple, twenty-eight feet in, but the applicant, he didn't want to mess with the privacy, so he has no windows between the unit and the existing house, so you aren't looking down at the yard. The other windows are looking down at a parking area in the back of somebody's backyard. And they would have gone with the existing footprint, and we could have done that one foot, but it, we've had to change the foundation. It wouldn't have held the second story. It would have been a mess. So we just said, no, we're gonna start over and just do this right. And so anyway, because he was trying to be honest with the ADU not just being above, that, that it triggered this variance, which I think was a thousand fifty dollars extra just to have this thing go through. So it's really making it tough for homeowners to, or people trying to do something good for the city and helping you with your housing element, and it's, it's gonna make this property so much more valuable and two additional living units on, on that same parcel. So it just seems like with all the other things that who being, that he's willing to pay with the, you know, the engineering and the sprinklers and the, all the other extra costs that are going through, it's gonna cost him a lot to pull this off, and, and it just seems like if he's gonna have to make the, the building two feet narrower, then he's not gonna, and not to threaten anybody, but it just makes it, so you're losing that square footage, and it just doesn't make sense. Because, like I say, it's improving what's existing, and it just seems like it makes sense that we can do something like this without ruffling feathers and make it something that's difficult to make happen. So anyway, so we're just proposing that you allow the applicant to go with the four-foot, and it's gonna be a nice place, and, and we'll create some additional housing for you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm shorter, sorry. There we go. My name is Shannon Farley. I reside right across from seventeen sixteen H Street. I'm seventeen seventeen H Street. I'm the homeowner, and, and I reside there. I submitted a letter on Tuesday, and I wasn't sure I was gonna be able to make it. I just wanted to ensure it was received. If not, I have a copy.
We did not get that letter.
Okay, I have a copy here for you. I don't think I can read it.
Alex, were you aware of the letter?
Okay, I emailed it to the Planning Commission on my notice here.
Planning at Eureka, CA?
Yeah, the one on, on the, the notice here.
Yeah, man.
Okay, all right, well.
I apologize. I don't know what happened.
I'll give you this copy here. Let me just refer to it real quickly on my points here. This, this variance in the setback doesn't bother me so much as the parking situation. There's no parking. There's only one parking place allotted with this property. We already have a big problem. There's one multifamily dwelling that wasn't listed on the plans, and that's at the corner of H and Wabash. There's another multifamily dwelling there, in addition to the one right across from seventeen twenty-five H Street. So crowding, parking and traffic is, is quite a crowding issue, and this is gonna, you know, increase that, which I oppose. The, the pathway that's planned that comes from H Street all the way back to the residence is, is kind of indicative to me that the parking would land on H Street affecting me. It already does affect me with overcrowding. I oppose it for that reason. The, the public access there, too, I, I'm sure you're aware, we all have burglary and homeless thievery problems downtown, and this is gonna create like a free pathway through from H Street to the alley. This is gonna create additional burglary problems, in my humble opinion. I've already been burglarized once. Homeless tend to sleep on our driveways, on our, on our front porches. I think that's gonna create more opportunity for that there. I think that presents a safety issue that I'm worried about. The design of the structure doesn't really match the historic neighborhood that we have. I'm concerned about that. It becomes a bit of a blight when you make just brand-new structures in a historic district. I'm concerned about it decreasing my property values. I maybe misinterpreted the plans, but I felt like there, there's gonna be a higher roof line across seventeen sixteen H Street, looking possibly down into my patio or front area. But he just mentioned there was no window. I may have misinterpreted the plans. I thought that there would be a window looking out towards H Street. So that concerns me. It concerns me with the beautification of my skyline. I added some pictures here of the beautiful sunset we had Monday night, and that is now gonna be obscured. So I, I'd like the city to take my opinions under consideration before approving this and request that it be denied. Do you have any questions for me?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
And, and I apologize on behalf of planning for, for missing that public comment. I apologize.
I'm looking through the whole files right now upstairs, and I'm not seeing it anywhere either. I've looked to see if I missed it, but I'm not seeing it.
Director Kenyon, are there, are there additional copies of that, or is there just one copy?
There's just one copy right now. No, I, they're not, the planning commissioners aren't gonna have time to
review it.
Never mind. Brian's gonna make his copies.
Okay, well, we can certainly table this for a minute and move on to the next one and come back to it, or do we need to wait?
Online, online comments?
Oh, are there any, anybody on?
I don't see any hands raised.
Yeah. Gosh, I've never dealt with stopping in the middle of an agenda item and moving on.
I'm, I'm comfortable with continuing forward, but I, but I would like to sort of revisit questions to staff, just, just because had we received that letter, we might have asked a couple more questions.
Okay, well, then we can bring it back. That would require a motion, so we could have further discussion. So if someone wants to make a motion, just for some further discussion for staff.
We haven't made a motion on this yet.
No, but to have further discussion at this point, we would need to make a motion, then be able to have some, a further discussion. Well, I just, when Luna had taken me in, she said, as soon as we close public comment for further discussion, then it just needs to come through a motion.
I see.
And that would just be a formality, and certainly that motion could be changed or denied.
I'll be happy to move that we
Thank you.
allow further discussion with staff.
Yeah, I'll second.
Great, now would be your opportunity to have that discussion. No, we don't need to vote now. We would have a chance for discussion. That's correct.
I have a simple question. You know, what is required for, for parking?
So ADUs don't require parking, and I believe that we were able to exempt the second-floor parking because it was less than five hundred square feet. I think that was our
So the base, the base ratio is one parking space per dwelling unit, but there are exemptions for small units and accessory dwelling units, which sounds like these both qualified for. Also, there's an exemption if you're gonna put a dwelling unit in a, or replace, if you're replacing covered parking with a dwelling unit, you don't have to replace that covered parking. So zero parking spaces are required, or proposed based on the plans. Oh, no, no, there's a, they are proposing that ground-floor garage. Alex, do you know how many spaces are in that?
It's just one. Just one space and zero are required for this part, for this project.
Assistant Planner Gonzalez, we didn't, we didn't see a landscape plan, but, you know, that, that, the walkway that allows H Street to reach the alley, I would assume that there's fences and gates and the like. It's not really a public right-of-way.
Exactly, exactly. There's a fence. It's a little hard to see on the plans, but it's up towards H Street. And it's an existing fence that is planned to maintain, so there would only be access from the alleyway to the residences.
Okay. Thank, thank you for those clarifications, staff. Those are all my additional questions.
I think, can we just get confirmation again that there was no fenestrational windows on the side facing the south, I think? Is that right?
There is no windows facing the existing single-family residence, and I believe that's to the south, the northeast, kind of.
Towards H Street. There's no windows. Did you, did you all get a copy? Okay.
Any chance you can bring up the slide with the neighborhood still with, and just so we can get a view of where the other multifamily is?
So H and Wabash.
And so right next door is that multifamily dwelling unit. And then there's also a dwelling unit on the corner of H and Seventeenth that has a similar structure that's what's proposed, where it's a rear-facing structure with that second-story dwelling unit.
I'm not totally clear where the city is with design review. Is that, is that a finished project now, or will, is there a design review for projects like this?
There's no design review for this project.
Okay.
It wouldn't have needed discretionary approval if it had been compliant with the objective standards of the code, but because it
You're naturally doing design review based on what the code says.
Oh, right. There are objective design review standards that are triggered because it is multi, it's a new structure, multifamily, yeah.
Thank you for clarifying. Is there a proposed change to the motion?
We haven't made a motion yet about.
We did.
Oh, okay.
For discussion purposes, and we can clarify that.
I don't think they, the motion that was made was about approving the project, so I think we should.
Just for discussion.
Correct.
And, and the, is the property adjacent, so I guess, I wanna get my bearings right. The property to the south, is that a historically listed structure?
Yeah, that one is. Historic multifamily.
But the, but the property, the front residence on H Street is not?
I'm not too sure about that one.
The one directly across.
Are you asking about the project site itself?
Yeah.
It's a, oh, is the project site historic?
Well, is the, is the, I, I don't think the garage is, but is the residence at the front?
No, no, it's not.
Meaning it's not on the register?
Yeah, it's not on the register.
Do you know when it was constructed?
I don't off the top of my head.
And that's fine. I, I visited the site before the meeting, so.
Oh, you have it here. Constructed as early as nineteen fifty-two.
That checks out. Yeah, I don't have any additional questions. I have no further discussion on this. I'm prepared to make a motion that we approve it.
Great. Looks like she's brought it back up for you.
Yeah, so. Oh, who does that?
Well, I'm so sorry, because generally what, you wouldn't make a motion for discussion. You would just make a motion for, you would say this motion, we would then discuss, and then we could edit or change the motion. So my assumption was you were moving to adopt the resolution. So I think at this point, we can just clarify that.
Okay, yeah, so I'll say that my earlier motion was in service of making
Or you can just make a motion.
resolution.
Just make it.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I do have a few comments after we decide. Okay, so yeah, I move the Planning Commission to adopt a resolution finding the project is exempt from SEQA and approving the major variance.
I will second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Yeah, I just, just that it's, you know, the, the, this project, I think the applicant's agent was hitting on is, you know, running the bubble, and it, it really is trying to provide housing. I, I think it's very close to meeting the, the prescriptive requirements of the code, and for that reason, it really doesn't trouble me to grant the variance. And the tension about, while I, I think the neighbors' concerns are valid as far as like parking, those are perpetual issues, the state's making it increasingly difficult for us to even require it on any project. And so I hope that folks recognize that we're not just, even if we wanted to require it, we probably couldn't in this instance, and that's, that's important to understanding why we have certain limited ability to not approve a project of this sort. So that's the reason why I voted in support.
Thank you. Motion carries. We'll move on to F two, Healy Building Ground Floor Use Authorization. Okay, I see Associate Planner Smith is on the Zoom. She will be presenting. I'll pull up her. Is Associate Planner Smith able to unmute herself? Oh, perfect. She's on her way down.
Good evening, Commissioners. Associate Planner Smith here. The project before you for your consideration is the Healy Building Ground Floor Use Authorization, Conditional Use Permit and Coastal Development Permit for the Healy Building located at three two five Second Street. Here is a bird's-eye view of the project site, where you can see the site is located in the heart of Old Town. Zooming in closer yet, you can see the site is located on the northern side of Second Street, south of Snug Alley, between D Street and E Street, just south
south of Snug Alley, between D Street and E Street, just south of First Street or Waterfront Drive. Here's a street view of the site, the first photo here is from Google Street View from 2019 and it is from Second Street facing northeast. The second photo is a more recent photo, also from Second Street facing northeast. And this third photo is a recent photo from Snug Alley facing southwest. The site is located in the coastal portion of the city. The site has a land use designation of CRC or Core Retail Commercial and a zoning district of CW or Commercial Waterfront. In the coastal zone, whenever a project requires a conditional use permit, a coastal development permit is also required. So here is a downward aerial view of the building which encompasses the entire site. The site contains four ground floor tenant spaces. Suite 101 is located in the southwest corner of the ground floor adjacent to Second Street and is currently occupied by Siren Song Tavern, a principally permitted use in the CW District. Suite 102 is located in the southeast corner of the ground floor, also adjacent to Second Street and is currently occupied by Vita Sana Pilates Studio, a physical culture studio which is a conditionally permitted use in the CW Zone. Suite 103 is located in the northwest portion of the ground floor, has no street frontage and is occupied by Summit Funding, a conditionally permitted use in the CW District. And last, Suite 104 is located in the northeast corner of the ground floor, has, has no transparency to the exterior and is occupied by Storage for Radiant Living, an office tenant of one of the upper floors. Suites 102, 103, 104, Suites 102, 103 and 104 are all occupied by conditional uses which are operating illegally without a use permit. The applicant is requesting authorization to allow a variety of conditional uses in all four ground floor tenant spaces, including arts and craft schools, barber and beauty shops, food stores, furniture stores, neighborhood health clubs, interior decorating shops, massage and physical culture studios, music and dance studios and musical instrument repair shops. The applicant is requesting additional authorization for the two alley adjacent tenant spaces for administrative business and professional offices except medical and dental and warehouse slash storage. A previous conditional use permit was approved in 2012 to allow for hardware store use on the ground floor and allow office uses on the upper floors. Approval of this use permit will allow the tenants of Suites 102, 103 and 104 to operate legally and obtain the necessary business licenses. Attachment one to the staff report is the Planning Commission Resolution which outlines the use permit, the use permit would be held to several conditions of approval, most notably the condition outlining requirements for street-facing ground floor storefrontages. Businesses occupying the tenant spaces must maintain and utilize the transparent ground floor storefronts during operating hours to support an active and engaging pedestrian environment on Second Street by ensuring at least 75% of the total glass area remains transparent and free of signage to promote views into the business and ensuring visually interesting displays and/or business activities are highly visible to pedestrians on Second Street. Also, businesses occupying the tenant spaces must be open for regular daytime or evening business hours of at least 35 hours per week and must regularly participate in major Old Town community events, including but not limited to Friday Night Markets and Arts Live. And the property owner must give, property owner or manager must prioritize leasing the tenant spaces, the, the street-facing tenant spaces, to businesses that are generally open to the public. As presented in the staff report, staff feels the findings for approval can be made and therefore, staff recommends the Planning Commission hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution finding the project is exempt from SEQA and approving the project with conditions. I do have a suggested motion on the next slide, but I will stop screen sharing to allow for discussion. Myself, I'm unsure if the applicant is here. Great, myself as well as the applicant are available for questions.
Thank you for that presentation. I will open it up for questions for staff.
I'd like to start with a really basic question and either for the applicant or Assistant Planner. I, what is the problem that's trying to be addressed here? What is the major thrust of this?
I think there's some existing tenants that are already in the building and operating that are, would normally require a use permit, so we're achieving a couple of things with this. One, we're allowing for those tenants to operate legally and then providing a little bit of flexibility in use in the future so that we can ensure these tenant spaces don't become vacant.
And I would even get bigger picture is that this is the coastal zone, it's an area where visitor-serving tourist-oriented uses are prioritized and that's something that's protected and enforced by the Coastal Act and the Coastal Commission when they certified our LCP. So the range of principally permitted uses are, are very limited and they're focused on tourist-oriented things. So like a retail shop, sure, principally permitted, but if you want to have a yoga studio that's thought of as more of a neighborhood local-serving business, it's conditionally permitted. And conditional use permits, trigger coastal development permits is quite an expensive process and our uses in our coastal zone are so specific that even though it seems like they're asking for a lot of uses, they're basically just asking for all of the identified neighborhood-serving retail and service uses that are conditionally permitted. Like, half of those uses in our inland code would be identified as indoor retail small. But in our coastal code, it's so specific use-wise that, yeah.
And the current uses were just overlooked and have been operating illegally and something triggered this being known and-
Yeah, it's actually a pretty widespread issue in Old Town. A lot of people don't have business licenses. A lot of tenants sign leases and then discover their use isn't allowed and there's an expensive CDPCUP process and I, I don't, it, it's probably partly the city's fault for being inconsistent in the past. It's just an ongoing issue.
So you expect to see more of these come through?
Hopefully we can update our code.
Hopefully. Sir, would you like to add anything to those answers?
Yeah, I am Kirk Kramer and the owner of the building. The tenant that was initially driving this was Vita Sana. They were permitted in the Vance Hotel on the corner of Second and G Street. However, I'm not sure. I, I think there's, a lot of times there's a lens of how are we going to permit? Or there's a lens of how can we obstruct the permitting? So they were permitted there, they moved down the street with no thought that in their business license, I am under the impression was active. They found a opportunity to apply for a grant within the city to help them do something within their business, tripped up the issue. The summit funding and other, in the back, other uses, that's not a retail-type use in the back of that building. It's just not, you wouldn't, you wouldn't, you'd have a heck of a time getting people directed to the back of the building. So it doesn't make sense. It's my understanding that, and, and I think we just heard that it's an antiquated ordinance and I'm told that that ordinance is expected to be upgraded, updated to next year so that this won't have to happen. We tried to just pause it and say, why don't you get your ordinance updated to reflect the reality of Old Town? And then, but no, we wanted, you know, $3,000 application fee, come in and get this straightened up, and so here we are. And correctly so, there's a lot of that going on in the city business districts because of the arduous process by which businesses are being asked to participate in a, a very expensive, very unpredictable, you know, it's, it's very complex and very complicated. So there's just a lot of, you know, when we look to the tenants to deal with their issue and, and the city's saying, well, no, we're looking to you to solve that problem, landowner. So that's where we are. So I, I'm, I'm here to, as you may or may not know, we redeveloped that building from a wrecking ball in 2009. And we moved in David El Mooney on the upper floors and in that process, that's the 2012, we were, we found out, you know, quite late in the game that a lot of the tenancy that we were then building permit, you know, actively getting building permits to build out shell improvements, we're tripping up this, this process by which we then had to go through a CDP and all of that noise. So anyway, that's, there's some history there that I can answer if there's any more questions. We're just quite honestly trying to clean things up, allow our tenants to continue to function. I think everybody there is functioning well. I don't, I think, I, I'm somewhat concerned about the 75% of the windows. As I think of Siren Song that's visually permitted, they don't even, I don't believe they're, they've got curtains over the windows and other things. So I, I want to be careful about the kind of requirements we put on these businesses that, that might trip them up and create us to be in a spot where we're back here again because somebody's got a, something on their window that, that, that is deemed to be a problem. So I, I only say that just because I'm, I've been in this game long enough that I just keep, you know, you find yourself tripped up on these things that you come to these meetings and you think, oh, that seems reasonable and I've been in it long enough to go, oh my gosh, they just used that in another, in another light, now we've got another problem. So I just caution you to try and, I'm hearing, you know, noise from the newspapers in the cities talking about implementing policies that are going to put property owners at risk if their buildings stay vacant for 30 days. So I, I don't need anything in my way to prevent me from occupying my building. If we're gonna do that and then say, well, we're gonna find you $1,000 a month per vacant space, that's a real problem. I really addressed that issue at the City Council, but I, I mean, that is, that is not the way to approach this. We're, we're not trying to keep our businesses and buildings downtown vacant. We're trying to, you know, occupy those things and do the best we can in a very difficult economic environment that in my eyes is just gonna start getting more difficult, that with more spaces that are gonna come up. So anyway, that, that's it.
Thank you for clarifying and answering that question, we'll definitely let you know if we have more for you, thank you.
I don't have any additional questions, I'm, I'm willing to entertain a motion.
You haven't taken, you look like you have something to say.
Oh, we have to still open public hearing.
Well, I, I got it, I'm running the meeting, yeah, it's no problem. No, it's okay, did you have something you'd like to say?
I think it's more just discussion, I don't think it's any questions for staff.
Great, okay, well, then I will open it up for a public hearing. So if anyone else would like to speak, now would be your opportunity, you have three minutes. Anyone on Zoom?
Just us, yeah.
Okay, well, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to Commission for a motion and any further discussion.
I guess I'll discuss. So I think, you know, I've, I've seen this happen quite a few times since being on the Commission now. You know, it's a, it's a frequent flyer issue as far as our Old Town properties are concerned. And, you know, I'm certainly sensitive to the, the balancing that we're asked to do as far as like trying to preserve the Old Town district portions of it that are, that are zoned this way for visitor-serving uses because they are prioritized in our coastal plan and we can't ignore that. Having said that, our plan is rather stale at this point, so I don't have great concern about revisiting that on a periodic basis with these individual proposals. I think it's unfortunate that it, it's become so cumbersome for the redevelopment and occupancy of the Old Town District, which is an important civic goal. And I think that if we do get around to doing the code updates, I'd like to see some concessions made for adaptive reuse. Mr. Kramer is quite famous locally for preserving and saving buildings from, you know, the Professional Building, you know, the Booners Building, or I think the Smugs and all that. You know, so like the Vance Hotel, you know, I, I don't know the whole resume, but I, you know, I remember when the earthquake happened. As far as I'm concerned, at the time that we had someone step in and take on the massive project to, you know, preserve this building, that should have eliminated any further baggage as far as uses are concerned. Not to mention the fact that the code allows for non-conforming uses to be maintained and replaced in some ways and so being creative in those regards is a way of avoiding getting stuck in the muck of the coastal use prioritization. But I definitely think it's due for revisiting. But I don't have any heartburn about giving a rather broad allowance so that Mr. Kramer has the ability to court tenancy and not be consistently coming back every few years to deal with this.
And then hopefully the tenant will have the opportunity to get the grant that she was looking for.
Precisely, so that's the way I look at it and I, and I think as far as someone who's interested in seeing historical buildings remain and be, remain a part of our landscape, these are the types of things, it's an unfunded mandate largely. I mean, there are tax credits and things for commercial buildings, but for the most part, we have to be ways of rewarding people that step in and do these things and not, not treat them the same as every other building on the street. I'm happy to say for the new building that gets built in Old Town within that district, like the ones we've approved in recent years, yeah, play by the rules because, you know, you developed this from scratch and you agreed to play. But yeah, for our historical structures, I think it's important to be flexible, so I'm comfortable.
You're gonna make the motion?
If, unless there's further discussion.
Well, you'll make the motion and then-
Okay, I'll make the motion.
That was a lengthy way to say you wanted to make that motion.
There you go, thank you for the help on that. Yes, I'll move that we adopt a resolution finding the project exempt from SEQA, conditionally approving the conditional use permit and coastal development permit for the Healy Building Ground Floor Use Authorization.
I will happily second that.
Any further discussion?
I think Commissioner Lazar said, said it well, so I don't have, but go ahead. And you just said well what I was gonna say, so.
So we can move on for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Kramer, thank you for all that you do here, it's, it's well noted.
Great, we will move to F3, City of Eureka's Corporate Yard Property Surplus. Awesome, this is again Associate Planner Smith. Who is sadly leaving us in August, so this will be your last presentation.
Yes, good evening again Commissioners, Associate Planner Smith, I am sad to be leaving the city. The project before you for your consideration is the City of Eureka's Proposed Corporation Yard Property Surplus at 945 West 14th Street. Here's a bird's eye view of the project site. You can see it's located in the northwest quadrant of the city west of Highway 101. Zooming in closer, you can see the site is located on the south side of West 14th Street, north of West 15th Street, west of Short Street and east of Railroad Avenue. In an area of the city highly concentrated with industrial land uses known as the West Side Industrial Area. The Corporation Yard seen here from West 14th Street looking south is where the city stores and repairs its fleet vehicles, public works equipment and maintenance material and serves as daily headquarters for permanent and seasonal staff. The corp yard stores critical equipment for emergency events. The site is at risk of liquefaction and tsunami flooding and future risk of storm flooding due to sea level rise. Some of the structures are significantly deteriorated. None of the structures meet current structural standards and there is inadequate space for existing employees. As a result, the city has a primary goal of relocating and redeveloping the corp yard to reduce risk of structural failure and ensure efficient operations during a natural disaster. The city has recently acquired a 5.6 acre site on a bluff above and east of Highway 101 between Ocean View Cemetery Drive and Sunset Street where the new operations complex will be constructed. I'm going to take a minute to explain the Surplus Land Act requirements placed on local governments. The Surplus Land Act is a right of refusal law requiring local agencies to offer surplus land for lease or sale for affordable housing and, housing and/or recreation or open space purposes before selling or leasing the land. before selling or leasing the land. Unless the land qualifies as exempt surplus land, the local agency must provide a written notice of availability or no way of the property for the development of low and moderate income housing to a list of housing sponsors kept by the California Department of Housing and Community Development. Entities interested in purchasing or leasing the surplus land for affordable housing then have 60 days to notify, then have 60 days to notify the local agency of their interest. And if interest is received, the local agency must negotiate in good faith with the interested entity for a period of not less than 90 days. And if agreement is reached, sell or lease the land for affordable housing. If the land meets an exemption, no one responds to the notice of availability, or if the local agency does not agree to a price in terms with an interested entity during the negotiation period, then the land can be leased or sold for other purposes. Separately, land in the coastal zone must follow the same process but to make the land available for open space purposes. The corp yard is not exempt and thus must be noticed for availability for affordable housing, and the property is in the coastal zone, so the city must also notice the availability of land for open space purposes. Once council declares the property surplus, the city is required to notice the, sorry, to note, to first notice the availability of the land for affordable housing and open space purposes for 60 days. If no one responds to the notice or if the city does not agree to a price in terms with an interested affordable housing or open space entity during a subsequent 90 day good faith in negotiation period, the city has the discretion to sell or lease to an entity of the city's choosing. Ultimately, it will be up to the city council to negotiate the terms and determine what best serves the entire community. The Surplus Land Act is a necessary step in allowing someone other than the city to develop and use the parcel. And only in the situation where the future use of the site is principally permitted use in the P-zone or the public district, zone district, which plans to utilize all the existing structures on site with no change to any of the building footprints, would no additional discretionary permits be required. So it's a very specific situation where we wouldn't see a project come before, you know, Planning Commission again. A subsequent coastal development permit and a use permit or conditional or minor, if a conditional or minor use was proposed, design review, and an environmental document will more than likely be required for future development and use of this site. Eureka Municipal Code Section 152.01 requires the Planning Commission advise and recommend to city council on dispositions of city-owned property. Additionally, city policies and procedures filed 2.01 outlines requirements for the sale of city-owned property, which include the site is not necessary for city use, the size and shape of the site are adequate for development of permitted uses, and the location, purpose, and extent of the disposition is consistent with the general plan. As presented in the staff report, the findings for approval can be made. It is important to note that the site is located in the P or Public Zone District where housing is not an allowed land use. The future use and development of the site, if the future use in the development of the site was for housing, the site would need to be rezoned, but this does not preclude the site or the city from needing to meet the requirements of the Surplus Land Act and prepare notice of availability for affordable housing. The recommendation is to hold a public hearing, review the CEQA exemption determination, and adopt a resolution recommending the city council declare the city corp yard surplus property. I do have a suggested motion on the next slide, but I will stop screen sharing to allow for discussion.
Thank you for your presentation, your final presentation. I will bring it to the commission for questions for staff.
I made the public works director stay late, so feel free to ask a question.
You don't have to have questions, though. He said he doesn't care.
Just an update on kind of the timeline, and I think it was in the staff report, I apologize, but on the transition to the new site, like, just what that looks like at this point, do we have any insight into that?
Here he comes.
Oh, that's okay. I didn't say for nothing. Good. Good evening. So the timeline, where we are now, we have completed the 50% schematic design process for the new operations complex at the Ocean View property. We did close escrow on that in May, took quite some time to get there, but we did do that. Next up is completing the 100% schematic design, then design development and construction document development. We took a bit of a pause because of the procurement process for the development of the property, getting a construction manager at risk to serve as the contractor and help guide the city and our consultants through the rest of the design process. But we anticipate being ready to start site work sometime in the spring. The goal is to, over the winter, develop construction documents and be ready to hand those off to the construction manager at risk or put them out to bid, start site work in the spring, and while we're doing that, continue the construction documents for the buildings with the thought that by the time the site is prepped by early fall, then building work can continue through next winter because the site's been weathered in to a certain We would then probably have a full year of construction of the buildings, the goal being we're at the new site by the end of 2026 and can then vacate this site. So we're going through this surplus process earlier than is necessary just to make sure that things can move as quickly as possible once we really don't have a need for those buildings at the existing corp yard site.
Do you have an idea of like a budget for the development of the site?
We're ironing that out right now and looking at financing options. Overall, the project, we don't have the money we need. We can't develop the project we would like to, but we're looking at a budget including design and exclusive of what we've already spent around 20 million, 22 million, something like that.
And the disposition of this property wouldn't likely offset that in any meaningful way, right?
If we get anything, you know, any substantial amount for this property, whatever we get for this property, will help to offset those costs, but we don't expect it to be a significant portion of it.
Great. Thanks for the update.
Quick follow-up question from my education. Use the term construction manager at risk. What's the definition of that?
Yeah, thank you for that question. Sorry for offering that up without any context. There are some alternative procurement methods that the city can use for larger scale projects. Design-build is one of them. That's one that people are more familiar with than construction manager at risk. Construction manager at risk is referred to by different terms, also CMGC or Construction Manager General Contractor. What that is, is a contractor who you bring on during the design process, who works with an architecture firm that's already been identified to help scope the project, identify constructibility issues, and give more accurate cost estimate feedback than a traditional cost estimator would. And then after the construction documents have been finalized, the contract is configured such that the construction manager then gives the city a guaranteed maximum price to complete that work. That price is negotiated. If we can arrive at something agreeable, then another phase of the contract is executed and that construction manager then goes about building that project. If we can't arrive at a guaranteed maximum price that's agreeable, then the city says, okay, thank you for your help. We pay some pre-agreed amount for those services during design, and we then put the project out to low bid like we ordinarily would with a design bid-build project.
I appreciate that.
I thought it was a really cool idea to, so that you don't have that disconnect between the architect and the contractor.
Yeah, and it's somewhat like design-build in that you have someone involved in the design process to give feedback. Design-build is just where you usually have a partnership between a contractor and a designer who work together. In this case, we already have a designer that the city's been working with and intends to continue working with. So the way of getting to sort of the same outcome is with a slightly different procurement method, this construction manager at risk.
Thank you again.
Further questions? Okay. I will open for a public hearing. But I don't see anybody.
Don't see anybody.
Thank you for confirming that. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioners for the suggested motion and any further discussion.
Okay. I move the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending the city council declare the city's corporation yard surplus property.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. We will move to old business. There is none. A new business is none. And staff report and communications report on Pearson Project at 2506 Street.
Oh, I think that's me then. So after that, our last planning commission, the planning commission added a condition to the adaptive reuse of the old Harley-Davidson site to give the applicant multiple options for improving pedestrian access to the DMV. And the applicant quickly and aggressively worked to figure a solution out and actually got HTA to agree to a microtransit stop there. They're starting this new microtransit program, and because there's already these government offices right next door, they thought it was an ideal place to put a stop there. So how the microtransit is working is that it's not a door-to-door service. You have to go to a bus stop, and then they'll pick you up from the bus stop and take you to other bus stops directly, so this, or to other stops. So this will be one of the stops that you can go to. And then because it was microtransit and not like a full-on bus stop, we negotiated with the applicant to also work on getting ADA access at least from the front door to the edge of his property in a logical place where it can later connect to, to public access or ADA compliant access on the adjacent office building parcel to get to that bus stop. And so after all that, I felt like it was definitely in substantial conformance with the condition that was added. And we also explored the other options, and there's information about that in the memo as well. So this is the report back to Planning Commission that was required by the condition. That's it.
I very much appreciate this. This body really ground on that one pretty hard, especially led by Commissioners Freitas and Lazar, and I, I think this is an example of the system working well. And thank you, Director Kenyon, for seeing it through in the quick report back.
Yeah, I second that. I was pleased to see a report and, and all of the collaboration with the applicant and agencies is laudable, so thanks. And I'm sure it wasn't easy, as much as we wanted it to be as painless as possible, but I think it's sensible and I can wrap my head around it.
I guess I should also say, shout out to the applicant.
We'll move to J, which I was alluded, there's some information there.
Yeah, so item J, other reports and communications. I just, I just want to share with, with the commission, I've shared with you last time that I was, I was out for the first half of the summer because I have a, a public leadership position in another country, in Cameroon, West Africa, that I've had since I was a Peace Corps volunteer there in, in the early 90s. And I came to my 32nd year of service to the Ingri tribe in the Northwest Highlands of Cameroon and had to, it's by appointment, these, you know, sub-chieftainses, but, but you have to go through some ritual called submit to the cup, which means you have to drink palm wine from a, not a cup like this, but from a cup and, from a gourd in which all, all parts of the village put their palm wine or poison. So it's not a democracy. If one part of the village feels that you're using your power not for the benefit of people, they will put poison instead of palm wine and you will be, it will become known to you from the public that they will make you sick, and if you continue to do poorly as a public leader, you will become dead. And so this is my third time submitting to the cup, and I brought a little clip of it. And, and so you can see my other life in West Africa where I have family and wives and children and a whole other life.
Why is it saying can't play?
Oh, it doesn't, it doesn't want to play. It's a MP4 file, very short.
It played on my computer. Oh, Derek's got it.
This went on national TV in Cameroon, by the way. That's, that's, it's not a clip that I made. It's something I pulled off of the TV.
When you pulled that cup out, I was starting to get a little worried.
No, no worries, no worries.
While we're waiting for IT, I just, a report of mine is that we've resurrected the Goldsch Greenway ordinance again, so.
My goodness.
Yeah, I've hired a consultant this time to help me get it. The draft that was prepared previously when I first arrived here is like 20 pages long, and he's expert at making things clear, plain English, concise. So we just had a meeting with CDFW today. Nope, go for it. I was done.
You have to take power with force. I first had to drink from that cup, and now it's being rubbed on me. Anyway, that's, that's a little clip. Just gives you a taste of the colors and the pageantry and the culture, the richness of the culture there. Anyway.
If you had given me 10,000 guesses on what I was going to see tonight, that would not have made the list.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry if we learned that the first African chief you ever met is a honky from Humboldt, but you know, I can't write scripts like this.
It's our pleasure to meet you in your other life. Okay. Well, on that note, we will adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.